In accordance with Chapter 239 Public Law in 1975, the Chicago Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in Notice of January 5, 2015, said numbers was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education, which mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, North Jersey Herald News, and Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised to the Nutley Sun on January 15, 2015, and Herald News on January 24, 2015, posted on the website. This is an official meeting. Please stand before the flagpole.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Mr. Kuzin?
Mrs. Connaughton?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. Corraire?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scheller?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Spazaga?
Here.
Okay. Now, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10, 4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel. Be further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we should be back with the 39th.
Mr. Connaughton?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. Corraire?
Yep.
Mr. Klein?
He's here. He lies here, he just...
Mr. Kuzinski?
I'm here too, yes.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Scheller?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Spazaga?
Here.
Okay, a few little minutes. I get a motion to...
I make the motion, please be approved.
Exactly.
All in favor?
All right.
Correspondents?
We do not have anything.
Okay. Okay, we'll wait till our presentations. Mr. Bell?
Come here.
No one else?
Go ahead. Good evening, everyone. My name's Jacob Powell, those that don't know me, I am the anti-bullying coordinator for the school district. Each year, at the conclusion of the school year, the district has to, each school has to self-assess their anti-bullying efforts. Prior to submitting, formally submitting the grades of each school to the Department of Education, we're required, Mr. Lazic and I, to present to the Board of Education a public meeting. Mr. Lazic? The self-assessment, each school, each school's anti-bullying specialist receives a 40, I provide them with a 40-page rubric, which consists of eight elements, which also has indicators, so subjects with indicators, where they have to rate themselves on a scale of zero to three, where zero was, does not meet, we're all the way to three, where exceeds all requirements. The Department of Ed also provides a list of suggestions of documentation to provide the school district, so in my office, I have four pages, about four years' worth of documentation to show the state that we are in compliance, or what our grades are. We have to substantiate our grades for each indicator. Mr. Lazic? Breaking down the element, the core, each core element. Core element number one, which is basically where the state is really focused on, is what are you doing to prevent anti-bullying? What programs? How are you assessing your programs? What approaches? What initiatives? How are you, how is the school safety team identifying and reviewing your school climate? What is the school climate in your building? Core element number two, on training, training your staff, on the employee's staff, trained on the anti-bullying policy procedures, which I think went into the school year, every single staff member was trained. We also had affirmative action training, which focused on protected characteristics, as you can see in core element number two. Core element number three, what else are you doing for other staff instruction, was, like I said, the affirmative action, which, which worked with Mr. Ciclatano, who is the affirmative action officer for the district. Suicide prevention, which last year, we did a whole district-wide program on suicide prevention for the district. Core element number four, what type of curriculum? What are we doing for the week of respect, which is required by Department of Ed, the first week in October, need to, to conduct week of respect activities in each school? Mr. Lazic, please. Thank you. Core element number five, the HIB personnel. Does each school have an anti-bullying specialist? Are they meeting twice a year with myself, the anti-bullying coordinator, which is required by law at a minimum? Is the school safety team meeting twice per year? Not only am I meeting with my staff, the anti-bullying, anti-bullying specialist, but the anti-bullying specialist also have teachers that are assigned by the principals to work as, in each school, as a team, a school safety team. Core element number three, are we following policies and procedures in reporting incidents? Are we implementing all those? Core element number seven, once again, talks about procedures, are we notifying parents? Are we completing the investigation of the timely matter? Are we providing reports to Mr. Lazic? Once we provide it to Mr. Lazic, is the Board of Ed receiving them on time? As you can see at each board meeting, each board of agenda, there's always, if you look under the agenda, it says HIB, first reading and second reading. The last core element, are our staff members reporting? What is the procedure? Which we have it online. Parents could fill out a form as well. Anonymously, people could fill out anonymous reports as well. Are we putting our grades for the last two years, the previous two years, are we putting them on our district website, which we are? We have a HIB link, which I posted on the, on the school website. So, now it's a lot of numbers. And here are our, if looking back at the core elements, here are our ratings of each school, with the anti-bullying specialist, worked with their school safety team. The max score you could receive for each school is a 78, if you look at the far-right corner, far-right column, those are our overall scores for each school, in alphabetical order. The last two are the middle school and the high school. Certain areas that we know that we've continued to work on is assessing our programs, a core element number one, conducting surveys, student and staff assessments of what they feel like what we're doing at, at each school, interventions, providing services through the guidance department, counseling services, intervention services, through the child study team meeting, child study team, with a school psychologist or school social worker as well, getting them involved. At the elementary level, we have a character education program. At the middle school, I'm looking at the middle school, one of the best neighborhoods we've ever done is, you know, go to the middle school model, where we're utilizing the advisory periods to implement programs. In the coming school year, Ms. Egan is also implementing two advisory periods a month. So, through those different lessons and life skills, we're incorporating an anti-bullying message as well. Now, to me, it's not just, and this is the message that we're also giving to everyone throughout the school district, it's not just about anti-bullying. What are we doing to make, to assist our students for life skills, to be respectful towards one another? Another element which we're taught, we're focusing on is core element number five, with providing coverage, one of the things that we had to work on this year, Ms. Fontana was on maternity leave, so at Radcliffe and at Yantacaw, school safety meeting, school safety meeting only met once, that's why it's a five. Core element number three, one of the things we're also working on, is providing our school safety team members with professional development training. That's one of the things I'm going to try to work on this year, is getting members of the school safety team out to different trainings, professional development. Mr. Lazic? Approved by the Board of Education this evening, Mr. Lazic formally submits it to the Department of Ed, he goes into their Department of Ed homeroom, he electronically submits it, statement of assurances he provides, which today being the approval date, if it is approved, at tonight's meeting. Lazic? Once we do receive, I believe this, the Department of Ed provides us with our formal grades, I believe it's like either December or January, they provide us with our formal grades, which then 10 days, within, within, within those 10 days of receiving notification, they have to be posted on our district website, which they have been every year. Mr. Lazic?
Thank you.
Just a note on really quick, first off, Joe, thank you, Mr. Bell. Ever since the legislation started four years ago, he's been the prime driver in the district, and I couldn't think of a better person to be the director of the Education. You do, another piece is, he mentioned it, is that he has spent time with any bullying specialists tying into character training, which should be, as I mentioned, it's not just about anti-bullying, but it's putting kids in situations where they're going to make good decisions in general, so that we're getting ahead of the league product. He's done a great job, and his team has done a great job working with the character acting team that we have in the building, so.
Mr. President, one question.
Mr. Bell, just briefly, a new teacher coming on board, out of college, coming on board the first time, what amount of time is spent with that teacher dealing with the hit? Well, I'm just curious.
Well, prior to the new legislation, now, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, each teacher coming out of college, each step, up a course in anti-bullying, so, and then at the new staff, new staff training, I mean with them for an hour to implement them, and then throughout the course of his school year, at each staff meeting, the anti-bullying specialist, they're put on the agenda, any questions? We also meet with our staff all the time, because I'm always telling the anti-bullying specialists, you should be on each agenda, and you should be speaking at each faculty meeting.
And they also deal with the, with the local person in their own, whatever school they're in?
They have both sessions.
You start, they deal with the specialist in the school?
Yes, yes, yes. I meet with them before the school year starts, because unfortunately, something could happen on the first day of school, and they need to know how to react immediately. So, before the first day of school, they are meeting, and they are fully trained. However, a lot of times, they're trained already of what the law is required, because they're required now out of college. Yes.
Do you have any questions? Can I go ahead?
You mentioned that Radcliffe and Yantacaw had a drop in the number on Core Number Five?
Yes.
We've taken steps to ensure that we can reach that number, and those steps were...
Yes, those steps, our anti-bullying specialist has returned for training.
Okay, but I mean, in the future, should we have someone at least?
Oh, yes, of course, yes.
We're going to make sure that there's no drop in.
Yes, yes, yep.
We discussed board appointments, that.
Everything, everything was...
Yeah, stick a backup plan, so that won't happen.
Yes, everything was addressed. The other anti-bullying specialists from other schools did do the investigation, as they addressed, however, we didn't have a meeting in that period, that's why that Core Element was at a five.
Okay, does it really move up?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Should we be...
Yeah.
Okay.
We're constantly looking at data and discussing not just performance of our staff, administration of the book, and our self-assessment, but we're always looking at student performance. This was presented in committee. We received our College Board information, our Advanced Placement scores, again, this has been an area of focus directed by the Board of Department of Teacher Plan. I do want to thank, as we go through these numbers, certainly Mr. Williams, leading the high school and really pushing this charge, Mrs. Villia as well, guidance has taken a big step, and this, and she and I, and Mr. BMS to work the computer regularly, to make sure we've accessed the right information, and also Ms. Maitup, whose name we mentioned in a number of things, testing the rest, has been a big part of our work with the teachers. We have regular meetings, you know, we've had parent meetings, all of this is new, but we've got a multi-year focus on a number of things, one of which is advanced placement. Just to start off, our number of students taking is spiked in 2013 because we required our students to take it, and again, we found issue with the legal, the legality of paying for the assessment, so we have a number of students back, we've kind of averaged out right now about 280 to 290, which is a little bit higher than what it was prior to 2013. We increased the number of students taking classes, and the percentage of those kids actually taking the test. We were talking about this with our teachers this morning, the most likely reasons our students take the classes that don't take the test, number one, they've already accepted to a college that isn't going to accept the credit anyway, so they don't see any reason for them to do it. The other piece is, a lot of our students, because of our existing schedule, take most of their AP classes, multiple AP classes, in their senior year, so they're taking sometimes five AP classes, and they're only prepared to prep for three of those tests, and so they're making decisions as to which three of the five. Now, as we move hopefully to a newer schedule, open up more offerings, kids like in other schools can space out when they take AP, they can take them earlier, and then they can take one or two classes a year, and then take those tests as well. So, again, working on that, that overall percentage, but we're maintaining consistency. This is a look at how students are scoring, the advanced placement tests are scored in an interesting way, they're from high to low, normal criteria, and everything, so it's looking not just at how they did on the test, but how they did on the test compared to other kids who took that test. Because of that, you can't really look at two different years of AP and compare the two, because a five is not a five from year to year. Scores are from one to five, College Board publicizes that a score of three is passing. Most colleges, universities are giving credit using four or above, so we're looking at both of those percentages, and as you can see, what you're doing is following the percentage of students who scored one, two, three, four, and five over the past three years, and over the course of the three years, we've shown significant improvement each of the last four years, actually. If I jump, this is more broken down percentage, but if I jump too, sorry, the actual percent passing, those students who scored a three or four or five versus those kids who scored a one or a two. As you can see from 2012, when we really started, 1112 was our first year working on this, we've showed significant improvement in the number of, percentage of kids who are passing advanced placement tests. And we go back to the fact that these are the best and brightest in specific content areas of, oftentimes, our highest level of content in the district, and we want to make sure they're performing well. When we arrived here and we started this work, about one out of two kids was just passing the test. Now, I'm happy to say, not only one or two kids, more than that are passing, but almost more than two are scoring fours or fives. So, we want to try and keep this trend moving. Again, if we could have one more year of the kind of success and growth we've shown over the past three, we would be in the top tier of performing high schools when it comes to advanced placement. So, we would have moved in a four-year period from the middle of the path to the top, and really, we support our teachers, again, thank to the Board, we've allocated resources for training, as well as resources for teaching the rest of the classes, we've encouraged more students to be taking the classes, with the guidance program and the rest, and our teachers really have just taken the reins and kind of run with this, you see the results. Every year, we break down these results by course, teachers have information by student, we map their advanced placement results against our internal assessments and performance matters, we actually import that data from the history of the, so they can break up that information and see how instruction impacted different students, and hopefully, every year, we hold it back, so not only getting more students into the classes, but getting higher performance from those classes. Again, we discussed the Board, this has been a focus, and we've shown significant improvement. I just have to report that the scores came out the first week of July, and we immediately downloaded, started writing them apart, and shared them with teachers, Mr. Williams already had people having conversations in front of him for next year, plus, we added two new courses this year that we'll have data on for next year. So, let me tee a vote for them. Any third questions?
Do you have a, how many took class, but didn't take the test?
I don't have it here, but we have the percentage. We also, what I did have available, because we haven't reported it to real-time, I always pulled the percentage of seniors who've taken at least one advanced placement course, because that's usually an important factor in evaluating the program.
Does that hurt us when they're tailing us?
Unfortunately, it does. We've been pushing for more kids to take the classes, even if they're not taking the test, because I'd rather explain the information to parents than not have the kids in the class, but actually, in many ways, as the high school is rated, it's seen as a negative when you have students who are taking the course and not taking the test, which seems counterproductive when they know full well, a large percentage of these students who are taking multiple advanced placement classes have applied early admission to certain schools, and depending on their major, will not be receiving credits, and kids see no reason in paying, you know, the amount of money and sitting for a multiple hour test, even if it's during school.
So, the kid does not remain in tour? It can remain in tour?
When we remain in tour, the issue becomes that it's part of a program the district is to pay for. The other problem with that is, it doesn't actually help us, because while we may have more students now sitting for the test, you have an exceptionally bright student who's already exceptionally powerful, doesn't need the credit, nothing's going to count, and unfortunately, they sit for a test they really don't care about. So, it really becomes counterproductive. So, again, I'd rather have the good problem of having, taking the hit on that side, as long as we have the kids in the class and doing more classes. And a big piece of that, remember, is that one of the first things we started to do was, we started to correlate the grades in the class to performance on the assessment, because we had kids getting A's and B's and getting ones and twos, and it's difficult to understand how you have a student acing a class and failing a common standard assessment.
Do students still take senior exams for that?
Yes, and again, one of the things we moved away from is that students taking the AP were exempt from finals, but the problem is, the AP test is usually in April, possibly May, ending up six weeks of instruction and nothing at the end of the year, with some of your classes right. What we've done is shifted the advanced placement final away from a similar test, which is what it used to be, which made those same students take the same test twice, to more project presentations, the rest, but they kind of go beyond the content, these, again, are some of our best and our brightest studying, our highest level content, they've taken the advanced placement test, that's great, so let's now use that information, that skill, that knowledge, and apply it in different ways. And so, the teachers have taken that to more exciting types of assessment, rather than just a standard, whether it's computer-based or pen and paper test that the College Boards are making.
Any questions? Anybody else?
Again, sorry, we are recognized, these numbers have gone up over the last two years, seventeen of our students were recognized AP scholars, another three with honors, thirteen were scholars of distinction, and we had two go all the way to national scholarship graders of all those. Thank you.
It's me again.
Here again.
Sure.
I'm glad you don't believe that.
Thank you. Just want to thank all the people who are involved, the Education Foundation, we've had a number of meetings, Mrs. Kuzinski, who's heading, Ms. Blair, Mr. Kuzinski as well, Mrs. Connaughton, getting involved, the foundation, I'm looking for a really great hook up in September, thanks to Nutley Sun for a nice article on the foundation, and just encouraging parents to get involved with that, we have a number of subcommittees doing a great deal of work in preparation for, and surely, be a banner year for that. I want to remind the Board that Mr. Pyro did, right after our last meeting, lead our coaches academy for the third year, got some great recognition, some significant changes in that department, you know, and all of our coaches were present, focused on his district strategic plan, his district strategic plan, and a great deal of training on working with the students and promoting the whole student, not just the athlete, but the student-athlete. It was well attended, we got some great feedbacks, survey watch from the coaches, and looking to move that forward. I know the association's here, do you want to say a few words about our summer program?
Say it here.
Sure, please, you can stand up.
Well, I came to thank the Board for your support, we have successfully learned what's learned again, and it's all, and I said to the parents privately, it's only because of my assignment partners, Board of Education, which will ask me, Dr. Blahni, Mr. BMS, over there in the corner, Ms. Amin, District Nicolette, whose custodians are so helpful to me, anything I need, they're always there to help me with, and the administration of the high school, but all those people are the reason I can stand here and say the program's a success. So, many people very much, we had 211 students, up from 185 last year, 25 of those students came from the extended day program, so it's good that we're both in the same building, for 20 classes that we offered, and... That's it. Sorry, I can't say anything. I don't think so. That was a great year.
I was privileged to visit the Lincoln School and the high school, to spend a full day looking at the programs, and I must tell you, every year, it's the same way, but the enthusiasm of the students, and then the administration and the teachers that were there, I mean, they, it was hard to tell, some of the teachers from the students, they were so involved in the program and what was going on, it's a, it's a great, great job that they do.
The staff makes me look good. They're, they're great, they look good, so that's easy. Were they great people there? I'll have to look at that.
It was nice having this close, because Dr. Blahni, they get over there, see what's going on, it's a, it's a nice reminder that all learning should be done in front of us.
Right, and they're smiling, they're laughing, and they come down with a piece of paper thick around their neck, and they're so excited about it, and they can't wait as the parents coming in the door, the cafeteria, and children are coming down, it's just so nice to see.
We know it's a great deal of work, so thank you, and we again, to make the process. Strategic work is continuing, we're looking for a presentation, you know, as we kick off the year in September, on the state of the district and how our strategic plan moving into year four work, so that, that will be exciting. We have all the action teams moving through, as you know, the administrators are in during the year, they've had teachers and other members into the teams, time will be locked out during administrative retreat, which is next, next week, to continue strategic planning work. Kindergarten registration update, I know you've all waited for the numbers, we are at about 250 kids total currently, Lincoln School still low, Yantacaw School holding, where we talked about last time, 65, and we shall see. As far as upcoming dates, first day for staff is the first of September, we're starting the Four Liberal Day, and our first day for students, Wednesday, September 2. This is a final piece, met with about 15 teachers, and another six or seven administrators taking to work on evaluation. I know it's become an interesting topic, as people, at the state has released its 2013, 2014 data, the Board all receives in brief all the extra data that I put together, that's not available, because I'll sign into the database and pull it, so that you can see comparisons. I will echo the words of the Assistant Commissioner, Commissioner Scholman, who mentioned that one year's worth of data does not tell us anything. My concern is that, he said that while releasing the data, everyone thinks that that tells us something. So, we've had a great deal of work trying to put these things in perspective, so that everyone actually understands, when we, when we broke down similar data, data that went to the Board and read with the teachers again today, what we found is, you can't really tell anything, because everyone is completely different. We're trying to compare apples to apples, and it's apples to fire engines. Everyone may be using Danielson, or 70% are using Danielson, and no two districts are using it the same way. So, I think a lot of people in the community are making statements about what is or is not true based on the data. All I can do is speak to our process, I stand by the process, I feel rigorous and supportive. We've looked at growth, first, accountability, third, we've worked with our staff, and we're here to make that process better, this morning's work was another example of that, closely with the associations, both administrator and our teacher faculty, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to serve the students the way they're meant to be served, but in order to do that to support them. So, if there are specific questions, any questions about that information, I'm happy to answer them as best as I can, but I unfortunately can't to speak to how other districts are or not implementing effectively or rigorously how the state requires. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to give you an update on the various projects that are going on throughout the district. The handicap access ramp at Lincoln School, construction began last Monday, the contractor will be out there every day, and the project is expected to be done prior to the beginning of school year. We've worked very closely with the staff in the building, with all the various programs that are running through the extended school year, as well as strategies programmed to make sure that all the students and the staff are entering and exiting the building in a safe fashion, as well as pick up on the students by the buses. The high school administration wing construction work has begun, we're almost complete with building a new office for the attendance staff, as well as one of the vice principals. We also are working on an additional classroom that needed to be constructed at Washington School, and the, if you've gone by Yantacaw School lately, you will see that the trees in the parking lot have been removed with the help of Commissioner Tucci and his staff. We've also addressed the drainage issues that we've been having in the parking lot, and that work was done by our own maintenance staff. So, now we are ready to pave the parking lot, as well as the two other blacktop areas, and there is a reservation on tonight's agenda to improve that work by D and O contracting. If you have some time, please stop in at Yantacaw School, Mr. Kuzinski and I will remain. there is a resolution on tonight's agenda to improve that work by D and M contracting. If you have some time, please stop in at Yanacaw School. Mr. Kazinsky and I were there one day looking at the floors, they were completely, all the wooden floors were completely sanded down, and we finished with polyurethane the way we have done last year in Washington School and in Lincoln School in the two previous years. So we're continuing to work on those maintenance upgrades throughout the schools. And as of today, the auditors have been, started their work, they came in to do the preliminary work on the payroll and purchasing testing. They will be in the rest of this week, and then we may not see them again until probably October, and begin to complete the work.
Okay, committee points.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on July 8th. Ms. Powell shared updates to the K-12 law and phys, physical education curriculum. Mr. Lazovic reviewed the AP scores and discussed specific areas of growth, as well as challenges. Dr. Galani discussed the kindergarten enrollment numbers. She also updated the committee members on the academic purchases. And we went over professional development and field trips. The long-range facility planning committee met on July 8th and also on the 27th. The committee reviewed the updated student population numbers. We also reviewed the need for buses moving forward, all grades, long-grade six students to the middle school. And also, we reviewed concept drawings with the architect. Detailed plans will be developed over the next few weeks for a presentation to the committee and then to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Carnicella.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on July 21st. Mrs. Yamin's reviewed the July 27th end resolutions, which we're going to have tonight. The committee reviewed the insurance coverage for property, auto liability, and workers' comp. Mrs. Yamin's highlighted the program's improvements, enhancements, and additions for the 2015 and 16 school year. Mr. Nicoletti provided an update on work orders completed and outstanding. He discussed the installation of a new security interior door at Radcliffe, permits and air sampling and monitoring at Radcliffe for the removal of the floor tops, the work in the high school administration area, replacement of the floor in the trainer's room, shared service to remove trees at Yanacaw and Spring Garden, and the paving at Yanacaw and the purchase of the tractor. We also discussed the bus lot variance, overtime cost for parks and immigration programs, donation of the new LED signs at Lincoln and Washington Schools, trimming remaining trees in the front of the middle school, and continuing the ground enhancement to the high school along Franklin Avenue. Our next meeting is dated for August 25th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Carnicella. In our committee, you mentioned something for Charlie for the policy, for our lit signs up on our schools. We discussed working on policy, so you turn that over to Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to make sure that that was...
It literally wasn't dropped.
Really? The what?
It was dropped.
You don't have any more, say your best.
I have two, I have a little business from where we like.
Okay, you're always in good business. Mr. Kazinsky, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. The administration committee met on July 8th. Myself, Sal, Rara, David Russo, Francis Flair. We have a presentation by our athletic director, Joe Pyrow. And he brought forth some information to us that I think was outstanding, I think most of the committee agreed. We have a handbook that he's working on for the parents, a handbook working on for the athletic department, and we're certainly moving in the right direction there. We also discussed the board retreat, which we covered, and we talked about different recommendations with personnel, policy regulations, which we'll see before you tonight. And our next meeting is scheduled for August 25th.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the next part. We now come to the portion of our meeting where our members of the public address the board. In this section, we'll have questions and comments on resolution items only. Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes based communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only if all of those wishing to speak on topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson. No one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address every time you address the board and sign with Mr. Guza before you take the microphone. The first person willing to want to speak, is that what you're calling? Okay, seeing none? On a resolution item?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to close this section, I'm going to ask academic, please, if you pass a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to hear academic resolution, if you want your floor to...
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Madam?
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes. Administration wants to send Mr. Kazinsky to serve as president of administration, resolutions 1 through 7.
Any discussion? Madam?
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes.
Administration wants to send Mr. Kazinsky to serve as president of administration, resolution 1 through 7. Any discussion? Madam?
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes.
Finance Resolution 113, Mr. Carnicella.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move on to Finance Resolution 113, that's right.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, I'm Karen. The purchase of the tractor, the one that's in there for repair now, are we just guarding that?
I'm sorry, I don't know if that's currently the, they're talking about, it's the same, this is the six-foot wide.
Yeah, there is one in there for repair.
Yeah, I believe that it's going to cost us a considerable amount of money, so to even have a backup, probably.
Okay, probably just a reason. Thank you.
Okay, Madam?
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, give the personnel resolution number one.
I'd like to move Personnel Resolution Number One, Mr. President, and let the...
Sorry. Any discussion on personnel resolution? Seeing none? Madam?
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sizada?
Yes.
Okay, hearing of citizens. In this section, we'll have questions and comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Once again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson. Give your name and sign with Madam Guza. First person, like Peter, step up to the mic.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin, you had talked about the long-range plan goals for the sixth grade moving to middle school. Do we have an update on the short-term plans?
Short-term plan, coming out of retreat, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they're moving to in September, in form, you know, we will be moving to sixth grade in the bottom year.
Sixteen, seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
In order to make sure we have an appropriate space, that's part of what we obviously wanted to do.
Yes. But they'll be moving as sixth grade students.
They're moving as, I think they're remaining Yanacaw School students, they simply will be attending school physically at the middle school. So it will still be elementary like everyone else, that would talk itself, attend classes, attend the same specials, they simply will be housed here because of space issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close that portion. Any old business?
I was, oh, is that all? I think both of them, old business, as we've discussed before. Um, the Education Foundation, we had committee meetings a couple of weeks ago. All the committees are functioning at multiple different levels, but there's a goal to have a kickoff at all of the elementary schools for the Education Foundation on open house. So hopefully to have that staff by a couple of parents and everyone in the schools, have a manner of explaining, talking about online membership and some of the other things, we're hoping to have a table in each school for the open house as it comes forward in September, October, I'm sure the date right now. Okay. Number two is, the mural committee will make its final meeting August 27th. We'll be picking the theme, so it'll be all students from seventh to twelfth grade that will be working and can present murals, that'll get voted out for a committee, and as I've just spoken, that final mural will become one on, how to say, tapestry, but on cloth, and be replaced in one of the old ones that's been open since the middle school's been built in honor of the anniversary of the middle school. So that'll be the only floor.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Anyone else that need?
Yes, Mr. Murphy. So on the old business, just to take off on what Karen said a little bit before about the work that was done over at the Yanacaw School. I know we are aware of the drainage problem that we had in that lower teacher's parking lot, for lack of a better term. What they found out was, and should know it, that that pipe was cut about five feet short of ever emptying into the river.